I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. I do want to let you make sure that you're in the right room. This is for the council meeting, not the planning board. So if you're here for the planning board, it's upstairs in the Whitman Room. Okay, Madam Clerk, please read the adequate notice compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council meeting notice dated May 22, 2024, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Excellent, thank you. Real call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Mr. Palowski?
Here.
Mr. Smallwood?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President Allen.
Here. Okay, I'd like our interns to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notices regarding hearings, comments, and closed session.
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, give her email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at citiclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting, to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes or so in length. I'm sorry, three minutes. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. Approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the regular and closed-session meeting minutes of June 5, 2024, and our special meeting of June 11, 2024?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. So it's so moved. Okay, on to reports.
All in favor?
All in, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on to reports. Madam Mayor.
That's me.
Yep.
Okay. I would like to take a moment to recognize and thank the incredible staff at the Summit Family and Product Center. Yesterday, we faced an unexpected challenge when a circulating pump malfunctioned, causing the pool to close for the day. Thanks to the swift and efficient work of our dedicated team, this issue has been resolved, and I'm pleased to announce that the pool was opened today. Outstanding work, everyone. And as I mentioned with, in my Mondays with the Mayor this morning, with the intense heat these past several days, many of us are eager to cool off in the pool. While we all want to enjoy our fantastic facility, I want to remind everybody about the importance of safety. Parents, please remember our lifeguards are there to ensure a safe environment, but they can't watch every child every moment. It only takes a second for an accident to happen in a crowded pool, especially on a hot day. So please, let's work together to ensure a safe and happy summer for everybody. And lastly, I am pleased to announce that the Summit Police Department has added six new pedestrian, stop pedestrian crossing signs in the areas with high pedestrian activity, such as crosswalks in our downtown area. This initiative is part of our ongoing efforts to promote pedestrian safety and provide clear direction to motorists. It's a state law that vehicles must stop for pedestrians in the crosswalk. I thank the police department for its continued efforts to educate the community and enforce the law for the benefit of us all, and I do want to remind the pedestrians that they also have a responsibility to pay attention as they cross the street. And next, I would like Megan Champney to introduce our interns.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening, Council President Allen, Mayor Fagan, esteemed members of common council and all joining us tonight, either in person or through our live broadcast. My name is Megan Champney-Cresselate, and I am the Human Resources Manager for the City of Summit. It is with great pride that I introduce our dedicated summer interns for the year 2024. These individuals are making significant contributions across several city departments. Please join me in welcoming Luke DiAndrea. Thank you. And Hope Bassaman. Stay standing. They are both working in the Human Resources Department with me. Hope is actually returning from our 2023 internship program, so we are thrilled to have her back. We've got Jessica Friedman, Emmy Guswami, and Nate Stackler, who are also bolstering our communications efforts. With Nate also working in our mayor's office, working on a project with the mayor, so thank you. Nick Margaritas, who is engaged in a finance-related project with administration. He's working very closely with Michael Rogers on a particular project, so thank you. And then we also have two additional interns who unfortunately could not join us this evening. However, that is Olivia Flame, working in our Department of Community Programs, and Anna Sullivan, who's also working with our Communications Department. These talented young individuals have spent the past three weeks immersing themselves in government operations and injecting new ideas into our community initiatives. Let's extend a warm welcome to them as they continue their educational journey by observing tonight's council meeting.
Can I take your picture?
Is this really fast? Yeah, definitely. Here.
Megan, do you want to stand next to me?
Go ahead. And while they're getting their photo taken, I just want to commend these young ladies and gentlemen. They have been working really hard, or at least they're faking it when I come in the room, so. But they've been, it's been a pleasure to have them in City Hall, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, you guys. Thank you, Megan. All right, you're all done with your reports?
I am.
Okay. All right. So the city's annual Fourth of July celebration is over a week, just a week away. Over on Thursday, July 4, please join us at Memorial Field for a day and evening filled with music, food, and fun. The festivities begin at noon with a flag-raising ceremony, followed by a children's bike parade at 12:15 PM, and conclude with an amazing firework display at 9 PM. Hopefully, it does not rain this year. For more details, visit summitcommunityprograms.com. And we want to give a big thank you to our corporate sponsors, Bristol Myers Squibb, Investors Bank, and to everyone in the community who donated. Your generosity helps this wonderful tradition to continue. We hope to see you there. I also want to thank Councilman Boyer and his family for inviting me to Pilgrim Church's 95th anniversary on Sunday. It was a spectacular and powerful service. Their uplifting message was a reminder that we must keep pushing forward to see the human in each other, look past our stereotypes, and when we focus on compassion, love, and empathy, we can break down all kinds of barriers. Trust is built on what we have in common, and divisions can be healed when we honestly seek to understand each other. So thank you for that. Okay. Okay, and we are on to historical minute. Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. So with school ending and no volunteer tonight, I dusted off an old, an old Summit Historic Minute that was done by Tristan Court in September of 2015 on the history of the public schools. The history of the Summit School System is quite unique. Along with the City of Summit's proximity to New York City and our train station, our great public school system represents one of the great, one of the many great aspects of our town. The first school in Summit was simply known as PS1 and was located right here in City Hall. This was the main school in Summit until Roosevelt School was built in the late 1880s. However, during this period, Summit was rapidly expanding, and officials began to recognize the need for more schools and an official town hall. At this time, while Summit was scouting the best locations for a new school, a wealthy New York businessman contacted city officials. He offered them a large piece of land to build their new school on. The businessman had just one request, not money nor great recognition. He wanted the school to be named after his late son Brayton, who had died at the age of 12 the year before. The town agreed, and that is why today Brayton is the only elementary school not named after a president or founder. Six years after the construction of Brayton in 1911, Summit announced plans to build two new schools, the Summit High and Junior High School and Washington School. With the completion of, with the completion of these schools in 1923 and 1924 respectively, PS1 was shut down and renovated to become the new City Hall. Now, I, along with Councilmen Boyer and Vartan, and City Clerk Lickertis, and City Treasurer Baldwin, and HR Manager Champney, and I think maybe some of the interns, are, are products of the Summit Schools. I received a balanced and liberal education when I was there. I learned how to think, not what to think. And with the rise of social media and the pressures our kids face these days, I worry. So some tenured professors wrote a letter to their students a while back, and I put a bunch on the table on the way in and out. You guys should all help yourselves. It's a worthwhile read. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilman. Okay. At this point in the meeting, we are going to head into public comment, and we welcome any member from the public about issues that are not topics on tonight's business agenda. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement or has a question, please provide a copy to the citiclerk@citiclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting, please state your name and home address clearly. To permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Tonight, our business administrator and affordable housing attorney are unfortunately out sick, so Michael and Nancy, if you're watching tonight, we wish you a speedy recovery. And if there's anything that we need to answer, that they would need to answer for tonight's discussion, we'll be directing their questions through email or the next, or at the next council meeting. So with that, without further ado, hold on one second, Dennis. Thank you. Yep.
Dennis White, 137 Tulip Street. I'm here to address the city's defamatory June 21 news release authored by City Housing Attorney Nancy Holm regarding the Gothamist article on the city's affordable housing activities. I understand city officials weren't happy with the Gothamist article. You weren't portrayed very favorably. That portrayal, however, was based on public comments made by the mayor and council members and had nothing to do with anything I have said or done. Moreover, the city's communication officer and city and common council refused to be interviewed for the article, as did Nancy Holm. The news release claims that the Gothamist article is one-sided, but in fact, the city was given an opportunity to comment and refused to do so. Instead, the city issued a news release attacking people quoted in the article, which would be me, Mark McBride, and Pastor Blake Skellett. The news release was authorized by Council President Allen, Mayor Fagan, City Administrator Rogers, Communication Officer Cairns, and I assume other members of the Mount Laurel Subcommittee, council members Hamlet and Palowski. The news article states twice that individuals quoted in the article, including me and Mark McBride, are advocating for affordable housing on the firehouse site because we have a financial stake in the development and want to profit from affordable housing. Members of the Mount Laurel Subcommittee, including Council Member Allen, Mayor Fagan, City Administrator Rogers, and Attorney Nancy Holm, know this is a lie. Mark McBride and I have been at lengthy meetings with the Subcommittee. I have met separately with you each individually and have had numerous email communications. In all my dealings with the city and in my interview with the Gothamists, I have been consistently professional, respectful, and factual. You know Mark and I are not developers. You know we are retired housing professionals who developed our proposal for the firehouse site because we think it's the best approach for the city and for working families who desperately need housing. You know we are unsalary volunteers working on behalf of the Summit Affordable Housing Corporation. You know the Summit Affordable Housing Corporation is not a developer. You know it's a nonprofit organization working to advocate for housing and affordable housing. With full knowledge that Mark and I have no financial stake in this development or any other affordable housing, you, Mayor Fagan, Council President Allen, Michael Rogers, Amy Cairns, and Attorney Holmes responded to the Gothamist article by lying about our intentions and impugning our integrity. Your lies have harmed my reputation as an honest, hard-working, community-minded person. I expect you to publish a retraction of your false allegation and post it on the city's website and Facebook page.
Someone's coming. I think Rosemary's coming. Yeah, yeah, she's just trying to, are you coming, Rosemary?
I am.
Okay. Hold on one second. Hold on one second, Henry. There you go. All right.
Hi, Henry Massaman, 18 Harley Road. I thought I'd do something a little different tonight. I'm going to do a show and tell. I have fond memories of show and tell, and I'm sure some of you do as well. At one of the neighborhood meetings, I suggested that in lieu of lighting Tatlock Fields, Memorial Field should be turfed. And the reason is, the stated purpose of putting up lights is to increase time that young athletes can practice and play. Well, putting lights up is not going to help during the most logical and most attractive times, which is right after school on Saturdays and Sundays. However, turfing another field will add 50% to the field availability in town. Now, when I mentioned turfing Memorial Field, Mr. Ozerowski responded quickly and forcefully that it was out of the question, too expensive, because Memorial Field has to be leveled before the turf can be applied. So I took a look at the two fields, two of the three fields that we have. The investor bank field was already a flat field before it was turfed. But here's the upper catlock, and if you'll see in this picture, there's a long wall the length of the field, and there's a large wall at the end of the field, about seven, eight feet. Those walls retain the soil that was used to fill, to level this field, so that it could be turfed. Then I went over to the lower high school field, which is now being built, and saw an even larger wall, an even higher wall. At the lowest point, it was above my head, and I'm six feet tall. At the highest point, over here, it was about 18 feet tall. So leveling the field is pretty much a standard practice in installing turf on a place that formerly did not have turf. And it would make good sense to spend the money making more fields available for young people than for lighting a field that already exists and distracting and disturbing an entire neighborhood. Good piece of news, my eight-year-old son went to the first day of community program summer camp today and came home a delighted little boy. It's a good program. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll leave this with you. Do you want this?
Sure. Yes, I'll just take a photo.
I want it because I will, there's a reason I want it.
Yeah. Thank you. You can leave it there on the floor. Thank you very much. And you know, you reminded me to say the Department of Communities Programs did an extraordinary job with their camp, 450 students this year, so.
Yes, I know. And we're using the corner of the house to allow more people.
Yeah, so thank you for reminding me. Okay. Hold on one second, Rosemary.
Is it good?
We're all set. Okay.
You ready? So last Friday at 4:06 PM.
Oh, Rosemary, can you say your full name and home address?
Sorry. Rosemary Grace Chestnut Avenue. So last Friday at 4:06 PM, I received your Summit Advisory text message, as did thousands of other Summit subscribers, linking to the statement refuting Gothamist affordable housing article. I'm here to respond to that press release attacking the character of Dennis White, Mark McBride, and Pastor Blake Skellett, people who have done nothing but worked tirelessly to get much-needed affordable housing built in Summit. I'm a member of Summit at home, and I know firsthand that Dennis and Mark have volunteered hundreds of hours to develop their affordable housing proposal, educate the community about it, and advocate it for, advocate for it with the city. In return for their good deeds, you, through your attorney Nancy Holm, have lied about their motive, claiming they stand to profit from their proposal. You know this is untrue. Everyone knows it's untrue. But apparently, you were so angered by their statements to the Gothamists, you lashed out with lies. And by the way, nothing in the article said by Dennis and Mark reflected poorly on you or the city. They, however, were respectful and gave facts without any personal attacks. However, public statements made by Mayor Fagan, Council President Allen, and Councilperson Hamlet were used in the article, and they made our city seem close-minded and classist. It was wrong for the city to use our public dollars to pay Nancy Holm to write this false attack. This is an adversarial news release. It treats Dennis and Mark as the enemy when in fact they are people working hard for the betterment of our community. The city's attorney, paid with resident money, should represent the interests of everyone in our community, not the interest of city officials whose egos were bruised by an unfavorable news article. In our democracy, Mark and Dennis have a First Amendment right to speak with the press about what they see as the city's mistakes in rejecting the Summit Affordable Housing Corporation's common sense proposal for the firehouse site. In our democracy, in our democracy, you as government officials have an obligation to understand and respect this right and engage in respectful dialogue about disagreements. The fact you resorted to lies to smear Dennis and Mark shows you do not have what it takes
Thank you, Ms. Grace.
to represent the people of Summit.
May I have your, Rosemary?
I have one question for you. Have you no shame?
Name and home address.
Hi, Maggie Baumann, 40 Lewis Avenue. My schedule hasn't allowed me to regularly attend council meetings, but I did make it to the boosters meeting with Councilman Smallwood discussing the Tatlock lights, and I was struck by a few things. He said it was difficult to choose one group's needs over another's. That may be true in some situations, but not this one. The negative impact of, of lights on the neighborhood far outweighs anything else, and let's not forget that lights are a want and not a need. During our 24 years in Summit, we've been a sports family. Our three kids played every seasonal sport in elementary and middle school. They played in high school with each of them chosen as a team captain. One played in college. My husband and I both coached and cheered along the way. But as much as we love sports, we know that they are just one part of our life, not everything. Dr. Fagan is probably familiar with the recent American Academy of Pediatrics report called "The Professionalization of Youth Sports." 70% of kids drop out of organized sports by age 13. The authors mention overtraining, burnout, pressure to succeed from parents and coaches, and overall loss of enjoyment. Kids don't quit sports because they can't play on a lighted field. They quit because it stops being fun. My other takeaway from the meeting is that the Tatlock neighborhood is the only one threatened by lights, making it easy for other residents to support this ill-advised plan. I originally thought that if these lights went up, there would be nothing stopping Oak Knoll, Ken Place, or Oratory from lighting their fields and disrupting those neighborhoods. Turns out, these schools can't put up lights because they must follow the city ordinance that prevents it. It's mind-boggling to me that the city, not restricted by the ordinance, can consider lights that are five times over the limit. The only structure in Summit taller than 80 feet is the helipad at Overlook Hospital. I know they are not part of this process, but I'd love to know what the Summit Planning Board would say about this reckless plan. I generally prefer to stick to facts and reality, but let's imagine if Tatlock wasn't the only field identified as a viable option by the volunteer committee. What if they recommended light installation at Tatlock or Memorial? What would happen then? You knew what you were getting into when you moved next to a field. That's what my friend who lives by Memorial said at the boosters meeting. Would he embrace the lights and fight to have them in his front yard? Would neighbors band together and campaign to bring lights to Memorial Field? Of course, they wouldn't. They would have all the same concerns that the Tatlock neighbors have. They would know that the already densely populated space cannot handle the traffic or parking. They would recognize it as a threat to their right to peace and tranquility, a threat to their home values. They would understand that a home buyer isn't going to pass on a house in Summit because their third grader can't practice a sport until 10 PM, but that buyer will pass on a house that has stadium lights in their front yard. Adding lights at any additional field in Summit is a bad idea, and I urge council to end this conversation. Thank you.
Name and address.
All right, Miles Calmenson, 67 Butler Parkway. So I've been looking around online to see if I can find some supporters for our group opposing stadium lights at Tatlock, and I found a local resident that I think would actually be a good candidate. On their website, they said some things that really resonated with me, and I wanted to share them with you all today. So when talking about overdevelopment, they said, "We don't need it. We need to preserve our community. We need safe and clean open spaces, parks, and playgrounds. We need sensible redevelopment." They also said, "The fact is, we do not have to permanently change the character of our town for any reason," and that we need careful analysis, due diligence, sorry, careful analysis and due diligence regarding the real costs and benefits, both tangible and intangible, of any proposed measure. Well, Michelle and I came up here a little while ago and talked about the tangible effects stadium lights would have on our property values. This person sounds like they might care about that. And to top it off, they even share our concerns about safety. Their website says, "We've seen it all, cars driving 45 in a 25 and rolling through stop signs, texting drivers, impatient drivers speeding by double parkers and parkers on crosswalks. We've heard about, we've all heard about it, cars hitting pedestrians." So when I read this, I couldn't help to get excited, to reach out and see if this hilltopper would join our group. So what do you say, Councilman Palowski? Will you join our group and publicly oppose stadium lighting?
I've asked about 10 times to join your group, but I keep getting rejected.
Well, if you come out publicly, we can, we will add you to the Facebook group. So, or, so if not, do you only care about preserving part of the community east of Woodland or south of Ken Place Boulevard? I'm sure that if you are worried about a new building in a commercial district changing the character of our town, you should be equally, if not more worried, about 80-foot stadium lights in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Or maybe, just maybe, all the fuss about Broad Street West was really never about the building. Thank you.
Jocelyn Modesto, 61 Butler Parkway. I attended the boosters meeting on May 15, where the Tatlock lighting project was discussed. Athletic Director Healy and Councilman Smallwood repeatedly emphasized the need for teams to practice on turf fields. They explicitly said that there is little demand for grass fields. Teams will choose to practice later on turf fields over practicing on grass fields. So from a practical standpoint, the current proposal to light the fields at Tatlock makes very little sense because it would provide minimal benefit while harming the mental and physical health of surrounding residents and further destroying their quality of life every single day. Lighting Tatlock would extend practice availability by a few hours each day, depending on the season. But if the grass fields that no one apparently wants to practice on were turfed, then teams would gain many hours of practice availability. of practice availability on weekdays without having to practice late at night. And they would also gain all day on Saturdays and Sundays. On days it rains, Memorial and Franklin grass fields are often shut down for many days while they drain and dry out. Turf would provide much more open practice time by allowing teams to practice both while it is raining as well as on days after the rain. It is a short-sighted solution to light two already overused fields and leave other fields in inoperative conditions, especially when the need for turf space was stressed by both Mr. Healy and Councilwoman Smallwood. If stadium lighting is installed at Tatlock, the numerous grass fields in Summit will sit empty instead of being put to use as viable practice space that in the long run will be able to accommodate Summit's growing population and longer sports seasons. Let us be resourceful about how we fix this so-called field shortage and turn often disregarded and unusable grass fields into desirable and functional turf fields without damaging an entire community's quality of life. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come up? Okay, okay. I'm going to--
Peter LaJoy, 124 Canoe Brook Parkway, Summit, New Jersey. I just want to speak about the comments that were just made about our esteemed council people and the mayor. They were personal and unwarranted. The-- Excuse me?
Is it Ray or--
People that know the affordable housing business do know that people make money off of it. They make money off of it through the purchase of tax credits. They make money off it because these projects are heavily subsidized by the federal and state government, and they convert that money into profit, and they put it in their pocket. And for anybody to say that isn't the case is lying. The council may have asked our attorney to write a letter. The attorney wrote the letter. Not any of these people sitting here. And you're personally offended? Well, I'm personally offended because you ceaselessly look to demean the people that were elected and just are trying to do good for this community. They have been working to follow our affordable housing plan and construct affordable housing, which is consistent with that plan and the agreement which was approved by the court. And to say otherwise is wrong. The news article, in my opinion, was merely an editorial. And it was stimulated because some people are unhappy about the fact that we're not building an oversized 55-unit affordable housing building, which we all know is against public policy because the policy of Mount Laurel has been to distribute affordable housing units throughout a market project and throughout a market community, which is much more healthy for those residents. But I think we need to stop focusing on the folks that are trying to do a job and were elected to do a job and are, quite frankly, in my opinion, are doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Okay. I'm going-- No, the one right in front of you. Name and address, please.
My name is Tom Zebra. I live at 768 Springfield Avenue, apartment A3. So I'm here tonight for two reasons. First, I want to commend everyone involved in coordinating the Juneteenth celebration last week. And seeing so many families come out to celebrate such an important day in American history was extremely heartening. However, I also want to voice the sadness I felt about one aspect of the celebration that I thought was unfortunate. It's my understanding that certain individuals, with input on the programming of the festivities, voiced opposition to Councilman Boyer having an opportunity to speak at the event. Now, it isn't my style to come out here and call anyone out by name, but to me, Councilman Boyer speaking seems like a no-brainer. He's the first ever black councilman in Summit. He's an incredible speaker. He is as good a man as I know in Summit or anywhere. And the fact that it would even require any debate to decide that he should give remarks is confusing to me. The only reason I could possibly think of that an organizer of the event would not want to allow him to speak is because they differ from him politically. And I would love to be wrong, but I don't believe that I am. He ultimately did speak at the event, and in spite of the pettiness thrown in his direction, Councilman Boyer delivered a message of progress, inclusivity, unity, and hope to those in attendance. I was, and I know others, were moved by his words. So I want to thank you, Councilman Boyer, for your strength and your character, as well as the example you set for our community. You are truly an inspiration to me and keep up the good work that you're doing for Summit and continue to block out the noise. And to those who resort to sanctimoniousness and virtue signaling and partisan political games in planning a celebration for a day as important as Juneteenth, I would suggest that you stop and consider how meaningful and uplifting it is to have somebody like Mr. Boyer behind the dais. Thank you for my three minutes, which are absolutely long enough to be up here to speak. Thanks.
Yes, email. City Kirk at City Summit. Okay. Any further comments? Otherwise, I'm going to close-- Yep, okay. Name and address, please.
Irene Jackson. I've lived in Summit for over 70 years, and now I'm in Springfield, the town over. I just want to say--
Do you mind just giving us your home address?
Sure.
For the record, yeah.
100 Stonehill Road--
Thank you.
Apartment D11, Springfield, New Jersey.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
I just wanted to mention that Councilman Jamelle Boyer is my son-in-law. And we love him to death. And I, too-- the gentleman who just spoke before me, I am so proud and happy that he noticed everything that other people noticed at the event. It was a very nice event, but it was a little-- you know, people were very rude. And the people that were there are not here tonight, I see. Maybe they got wind that somebody was going to mention something about it. But Jamelle is such a great guy. And I, you know, we love him to death. And I don't like to see disrespect to people who have not done anything to you that don't deserve the treatment that he was getting. I mean, they had turned the mic down so you could barely hear what he was saying. You could hear it. But you could-- and the different clapping, like, "Okay, your time is up," and different facial-- like they're immature adults. They call themselves adults. And I just wanted to mention that I'm a mama bear, okay? And when anybody messes with my children, they're in trouble, okay? And I've lived long enough to have seen a lot in Summit, New Jersey, being, like I said, born and raised here for 70 years, and now I'm in Springfield. But I just wanted to let Jamelle know that I am behind him 100%. Anything that you do or say, I know it's going to be good and meaningful. And we love you, and keep up the good work, all the council people here tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I didn't put her up to that, by the way.
Pretty impressive that your mother-in-law said about you. Just saying.
We all know mama bears up here.
Good evening, everyone. David McCray, 95 Orchard Street. Just to give a little history about Jamelle, I watched this young man grow up to become a very fine young man, a great speaker, and someone that you can be proud of. Great father, great friend, and a great person on this council. So from my heart, I've always just wanted to say how proud I am of you. I watched you come from the youth center days, when you were like here, and his wife, when she-- well, actually, just so that you know, I used to hold his wife in my arms. Okay? I grew up on William Street, which is probably one of the best streets in Summit. But I just wanted to tell you that the whole William Street community is so proud of you for everything that you've accomplished. And I'm speaking from my heart. I just wanted you to know that. And we stand behind you 100%.
Thank you. Okay.
Could I just say one thing? My mom is visiting. So, Mom, if you're watching, could you, like, come down?
Okay. If anybody else would like to speak?
Lynn Olivas, 24 Plains Street. Last meeting, there was a comment made about the firehouse being the fire-taj-- the firehouse, or something. This is a town, upscale town, beautiful homes. But to paraphrase Flashdance, we're not exactly a town made of steel, made of stone. We're made of wood and vinyl. So nice, good wind, and a fire, and the town is gone. So I would think that people would want the most experienced, the most trained, the most equipped fire department that they can get. And the old firehouse was pretty tired. And I think if your budget went a little awry because, you know, spend $15 million on the new firehouse and to equip it, you know, maybe another $500,000, and you really have something there. But I think that that's money well-spent. I mean, even the rescue squad, the man who was here last year, who they resuscitated-- I mean, is his life worth $15 million? Kids, all the sports that are played here, and the rescue squad that's there and can resuscitate any kid who seems to happen a lot now that they're hit in the chest and then they're down. They have to be resuscitated. I think we should really be proud of what we've built and not squawk, "Well, now we're in debt, and now we have to change the zoning so we can pay for our firehouse" and do all those things. It's a great firehouse, and we should own it.
Thank you. Did you send her? Okay. Are we good with public comment? Anyone else? Okay? Okay?
I came here, so I might as well say something. Kevin McGoy, 113 Woodland Avenue. I just want to put one thing in context. When we moved-- when we decided to move the firehouse, at that time, it was talked about. The reason to move it is because we were going to this redevelopment area, and in nobody's-- no developer's plan was there going to be a firehouse there. We bought at the same time we decided to move the firehouse. And I think, Greg, you maybe introduced it. David and I do talked about it. You talked about that we were also, at the same time, buying the office building next to it for $1.55 million to have that to sell to a developer. You both talked about the cost of moving the firehouse was much more than expected. It actually is turning out to be much more than you thought at the time. But you talked about that the sale of the firehouse and this new office building property and the tax revenues that you would receive from it would help the city pay for-- or pay for it entirely, I think it was said at that meeting, that new firehouse. Okay? So then we went on. The city made a mistake of entering into a development agreement with one developer before it ever talked about plans or money or anything else, right? And then that caused us to look at building this monstrosity of a building that had at no point any more than one of the absolute minimum affordable housing units in it, okay? We extricated ourselves from that agreement because we couldn't reach a financial agreement with this. They were screwing around with us. It was ridiculous. We finally got out of that. In less than three months, a group of people from the Interfaith Council, the Beacon Church, whatever, came together at this At Home for Summit, presented the city with a deal to build 100% affordable housing, which is not what the city's required to do, and saying what they could pay, telling the city, "We need to do this right now because we're not going to have funds by the end of this year. There's some funds that are coming up. We need to do this." Okay? The city was-- all of the people that were elected were elected to figure out what was the best use of that, figure out what the city's obligations were, figure out what the best for the residents of Summit were. The At Home for Summit people were telling us, telling you that you needed to circumvent that entire process and do their deal, not talk to anybody else. If you decided, for some reason, that 100% affordable housing was the right way to go for Summit, you should at least talk to multiple people and see what they're willing to do and what they're willing to pay. The idea that we would be required to enter into with one group of people after we just got out of it, and we're getting sued for getting out of it, and I think one of the things they're looking into and they're saying is that you had discussions with At Home for Summit, I guess, before it was terminated or before the end of this year or before the end of last year or whatever. Anyway, I just wanted to put that in perspective.
Okay. Okay. I am going to close public comment. Okay? And I'm going to go to council. Councilwoman Hamlet-- Councilwoman Hamlet?
Go ahead. So one comment I have is this Gotham-- Gothamist article. It's all over social media. Folks can look it up. Gothamists printed an article with a number of inaccurate statements. You don't really have to look any further than the title, which is, "Rich New Jersey City Turns Down Affordable Housing Development to Build Pricey Apartments." Well, that's just not true. All we did was put it in an overlay zone. So we published-- the city published a press release to correct the record. Late Friday afternoon, early evening-- I think someone said it was 4:06. I have no reason to doubt that. Not long after we published that, we heard that some people had, in our opinion, misinterpreted a portion of the statement, so we clarified it, as is often done with press releases. And now it says, "The Gothamist article and the self-serving statements made by representatives of a developer who stands to benefit financially want the public to think that there are only two choices, et cetera." So, just wanted to clarify that for everybody.
Thank you. Councilman Palowski. All right. Does anybody else want to speak?
Sure.
Councilman Smallwood.
I just wanted to address the, I'm not going to, there was four council, or four residents that came and spoke about, or in reference, Tatlock Lights. So, I'm just going to kind of go through it in aggregate. I've also tried to join the private Facebook group, United for Tatlock. I'm still waiting for my request to be accepted. So, with that, you know, I've inherited a project that has been discussed, whether it's been public or not. It's been discussed within the Department of Community Programs since 2018. In the 2022, December 2022 preliminary budget, and then it was taken out of the budget in 2023. It was in the 2023 December preliminary budget, and it was taken out in the 2024 budget. So, we're in the exact same spot as we were last year. However, somehow with, I guess, a new council, it's a hot topic when we're in the exact same spot as we were last year. What I'd like to ask is, how many other council members? I've held five separate individual meetings with the Tatlock residents. I held them at different times, different days, so that we could accommodate people who work, people who stay at home, people who have children. I have done nothing but be as transparent as I possibly can for a project that's not even on the agenda. And yet, I'm not included in a private Facebook group, which you have every right to deny me. You have every right to hold a private Facebook group. But if you're asking for transparency, why not? Let's open the discussion. I have, at least five times, with close to 55 to 60 residents in the Tatlock neighborhood. I have done everything I possibly can for something that's not even on the agenda in terms of transparency, and I will continue to do that. We've taken those meetings. We did a traffic, a comprehensive traffic study that cost $21,000 on graduation day. We're going to do another traffic study during one of the largest football games. In the fall, we're doing an environmental study. And yet, there's still residents that come up, knowing that we are going to be doing this, knowing that the discussions still come up and talk about lights at Tatlock. I have not brought this to a council. And you have every right to. And let's continue this dialogue. But I also find it ironic that you're recommending turfing a field and taking away green space when, in 2008, you were so adamant against turfing Tatlock. So, I kind of find that a little bit ironic. You know, the only, the only thing I can say is, I'm going to completely be transparent with you. I don't know how many other council members you've spoken to prior to this year. I didn't bring this to the Department of Community Programs. I inherited it. And I've taken it on, and I'll continue to be transparent and continue with those meetings. And that's all I can say. You know, I just feel like, you know, if you want transparency, then maybe you would reconsider my acceptance into your private Facebook group.
Thank you, Councilman Smallwood. Councilwoman Hamlet. Councilwoman Burtan.
I can, okay, go ahead. I guess a couple of things on the proposal and the Gothamist article. The one frustrating point for me in that article was was when Mr. White was quoted and said, "I guess the frustrating part was that there was no additional discussion." And what I can tell the public, and with confidence, is there was a lot of discussion. There was a lot of meetings. I personally sat with Mr. White for about an hour and a half. We talked about going on field trips with the organization to do smaller projects around Summit. We meant that. We genuinely want that. I spoke with Mark McBride at the last meeting about the continued desire to work together. I spoke with our city planner today, Tom Barons, and I said, "When we were in those meetings, or when you were in the meetings with Lisa Allen and the mayor, did you get the feeling that if this project didn't work, would others work?" And he said, "Yes, absolutely. We spoke to all involved and said, 'If this project doesn't work, would any small projects work?' And the answer was, 'Yes, of course. We'd love to work with you.'" So, I truly and genuinely think that all of us had good intentions to work with the Summit at Home. They are volunteers. And Dennis and Mark, you've been obviously very professional, and I've enjoyed your company and learning about tax credits and how we can accomplish affordable housing in Summit. But for the audience, I think it's important to remember what our attorney said at the last meeting, which is that there is a risk for the city. There are 4% tax credits, 9% tax credits, that usually fund the entire project. Usually, the city to any, usually any municipality would have to give the land away or donate it to whoever's doing the project. However, as a requirement for going to public funding, a municipality has to have a resolution of intent to bond. If there's a shortfall in funds, and that's when we talk about gap financing. So, if we give the land, money from the trust fund, and the project still comes up short, that happened very often in 2021, is what she told us, when construction costs skyrocketed, and then all of a sudden, 100% affordable housing developers came back and said, "Sorry, we have a $3 million gap just because of the price of lumber." And that's how it happened. So, the municipality is typically on the hook for whatever is not financed and whatever is not provided by the state for funding. So, when Nancy Holmes talked about the fairness hearings that she is currently sitting in, there is certainly a risk to the taxpayer if these projects, if the costs skyrocket and we have to do that intent to bond. So, I am, you know, confident that our overlay zone is going to provide plenty of affordable housing, and we don't know what will be on that overlay zone. So, I think that, I think that was all I had to say. Mr. Bassman, I really like your picture, wherever that is, of the turf field down below the high school. And the wall is very, very large. And it was set on the planning board, and we had some concerns about that wall. And I don't think we're going to be able to replace too many trees there now that I'm actually looking at that. I think that's all I had. I think that's all I have. Okay? I think that's all. Okay? You good? Oh, I think the last thing. No, that's it. That's it. That's it. Okay.
Councilman Burtan, do you want to say anything? Councilman Boyer?
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to switch it up a little bit here. First, I'd like to thank Pastor Allen and Reverend Dean from Pilgrim for inviting me and Council President Allen this Sunday for, to celebrate their 95th year in operation here in Summit as a church. It was, it was an amazing event. It was a very emotional event. Reverend Allen had me come up and also introduced Council President. And it was a feeling of love, acceptance, and community. And I thank the Reverend, both Reverend and Pastor for that. Now, as you all know, this past weekend, we had the Juneteenth event. And I was honored to be invited to speak as Summit's first Black councilman elected to Summit City Council since its inception in 1869. This was a momentous occasion, and I believed it important to address the community at this event. However, I feel it crucial to inform all the residents about some troubling events that occurred leading up to the event. The week of the Juneteenth celebration, council members and city employees were informed by the Juneteenth Event Committee, which included members of the Interfaith Council and Anti-Racism Committee, that they did not want me to speak. Their reason was, I was a Black. I am a Black Republican, and they did not consider me really Black. And they disagreed with my policy views. So, simply because I am a Black man with different opinions and political beliefs, yes, I was deemed not Black by a politically motivated group, most of which whom do not reside in this town. During conversations with city employees and council members, these individuals said the following. "He can't speak. He can't speak. He doesn't represent what it means to be Black in Summit." "He put in the Resident Protection Ordinance. While political disagreements are normal, using these disagreements to invalidate my racial identity is discriminatory." "If he speak, or if he's speaking, then we're going to have comments in return. And I can't guarantee what we're going to say because we're going to make it clear that he doesn't represent Black folks in Summit." "They attempted to intimidate and discredit me publicly, which for me created a sense that I would be going into a hostile environment." Despite several discussions by our council president, council members, and city employees, a compromise was reached, allowing all council members 45 seconds to speak. Now imagine, I am a volunteer. I am working. I'm talking to residents on the phone during the week, trying to solve issues, and I'm getting five or six calls back and forth from other council members, city employees, and the council president discussing about me speaking at a Juneteenth event, and a group of people saying the reason is, they don't consider me as Black. That is disgusting. It is outright disrespectful. We cannot be hypocrites. If Black people are truly free, we can, we can have different opinions without being called not Black. Sometimes, we discuss race in general terms. But now, it is staring us in the face. Does being a Democrat or a liberal make one Black? While anything else does not, don't you see the hypocrisy in that? Normally, I wouldn't even bother addressing such childish nonsense, like if I was in high school. However, members of the Anti-Racism Committee must understand that I deeply love Black people. Love is not just a word. It is the embodiment of certain principles. If these principles are violated, you cannot claim to love. Love is not a romantic term. It is not just an emotional feeling. It is principles carried into practice. The principles are freedom, justice, and equality. These are essential to life. If you love your brother but deny him the freedom to express himself, you are not acting out of love. If you claim to love another but refuse to treat each other fairly simply because of political differences, differing beliefs, or different religious practices, this is not justice, nor is it freedom, nor is it equality. There is no love there. For your sake, my sake, for God's sake, and for the sake of our future, loving each other is essential to achieving freedom, justice, and equality that we seek. Loving each other means giving each other the freedom to express what we think and feel and listening with patience and genuine concern, not mockery and scorn. That's right. We are too busy mocking, laughing at, and putting each other down. The Earth is a vast place. It accommodates all forms of life, on sea, land, and air. Are you really going to tell me that the Earth is too small to accommodate your idea and mine? This is hateful in the sight of our curator and hateful in the sight of intelligent people. This treatment was not just a personal affront, but a disrespect to the office I hold, the town I serve, and the residents, including many from Summit's Black community. This is the town where I grew up. Whether you agree or disagree, we must have the wisdom to truly listen to each other. We must develop the patience to hear each other out carefully and the maturity to question and disagree intelligently. But we must never let our disagreements turn us into the kind of opposition that hinders us from addressing the needs of our community. If our churches and residents truly stand against racism and support the freedom of Black people to express diverse views, I urge you to take another look at your Anti-Racism Committee and some members of your Interfaith Council. Do we tolerate racism only when it lies with a particular political narrative? Is this the legacy that we want in how we treat our first Black councilman? Because history will tell the story. Thank you, Council President. Y'all go on and sit down now.
I'm still impressed that your mother-in-law came up and said nice things about you.
I just wanted to thank my family for coming out. And to my son and daughter who are watching at home. Yeah, your daddy's strong, you know? You don't got to worry about me, all right?
Thank you, Councilman Boyer. Okay. I'm going to close this part, portion of our meeting. I'm actually going to take five minutes. If anybody would like to use the restroom or exit the room, so. Five minutes. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Okay. We are moving into ordinances for hearing. Madam Clerk, please read the first ordinance.
Ordinance number 24-3320, an ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 4, Departments Created, Section 2-15, Department of Police, Subsection 2-15.1, Establishment.
And God bless you. Councilman Boyer, safety and health.
I'm sorry, excuse me. I was just taken back by a, by a comment that, you know, I should recognize Susan Harrison as the first Black African-American female councilwoman in Summit. And I have a lot of respect for Susan. And I'm sorry, I forgot that. But I want to point out that Susan was invited to speak. So, thank you for reminding me, Councilman Burtan. And I wasn't. Susan's a Democrat, and I'm a Republican. So, we'll go back to it again. As a matter of fact, you know, I don't want to talk about this topic anymore tonight. But yes, I do recognize Susan's accomplishments. And so, I'll leave it at that. All right, so ordinance number, excuse me. Ordinance ID number 24-3320. This ordinance is a request being made in part due to the recodification of the agency's organizational structure table, which would increase the Summit Police Department's level of staffing from 47 sworn personnel to 50 sworn personnel. Allocation of funding for two additional officers has already been made. In addition, the third position, and I want to reflect this, is for an officer who was already replaced following a permanent assignment to the state PBA office, in which the city has agreed for his salary reimbursement. I move to adopt this ordinance.
You're opening the hearing, sir.
Yes. I move to open the hearing for this ordinance. And this ordinance was adopted on 6/5, right? So, yeah. Thank you.
Hearing is open. Council comments? Public comments? Okay, we're going to close the hearing. Madam Clerk?
Yes, ordinance number 24-3321, repeal and replace Chapter 29, Protection of Trees.
Excellent. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Fox, Councilwoman Allen, I'm sorry. Going back in history here. This is ordinance 24-3321. This ordinance repeals and replaces Chapter 29, Protection of Trees, to provide for permitting requirements regarding private tree placements at a tree diameter of 12 inches rather than 16. It also clarifies the language, exempting hazardous trees from fees or replacement requirements, updates the violations and penalties to reflect current tree care costs, adds prohibited species, and updates and clarifies language throughout the ordinance. I would like to move this ordinance for hearing.
Second.
Excellent. Okay, hearing is open. Council comments? Public comments?
Real quick, I mean, I would just like to say that through the Shade Tree Committee, Councilman Palowski and the city forester and the city staff, this was a ton of work, and I trust that everything is wonderful in here. I've read it a few times, but all the hard work really was done within the Shade Tree Committee and the city staff. So, thank you for all your hard work that you put into this.
Good evening. My name is John Kilby, Nineteen Oxbow Lane, Summit. I'm the current Chair of the Summit Shade Tree Committee. Well, with the current heat wave, even the most disinterested residents have seen some advantage to trees, I would think. Summit, in the earliest days, has been a place where people came out from New York to take the air. And I think we saw a good example of that today. I'm certain that both the hilltop location and the tree canopy helped in this regard. I believe it is our role to both maintain and hopefully improve on the tree canopy during our relatively small timeframe relating to tree terms. It has not been easy with the amount of new oversized construction over the last decade in the city and the consequent loss of many mature trees. Unfortunately, this has also affected our stormwater management. The recent arrival of three major tree infections, the ash, the pin oaks, and now the beech, has and will certainly take its toll. Compound this with harsher weather and storm systems, and it's not been an easy decade for trees. However, our past aggressive planting policies, I think, have held our own. Our revision review has been quite extensive prior to the state guidelines on which the ordinance is based. In the various areas of compliance, we have chosen a middle approach from those of our neighboring towns and cities which we have reviewed. We've included provisions that the forester can mitigate absolute compliance where diseased trees losses put an unfair burden on residents, and updated technical aspects of the city's administrative operation guidelines. The revised ordinance will provide the city forester more appropriate tools to do his job. And on that basis, I ask the council to support this revision. In closing, I wish to publicly thank our volunteers that have enabled the shade tree, as John Linton would say, punch above our weight class. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mimi Zukov. I'm a member of the Summit Environmental Commission, and I came tonight to read a statement that was prepared by Donna Patel, our Chair, who is out of the country and is not able to be here tonight. Dear Mayor and Council, common councilmembers, the City of Summit is proudly a tree city USA and celebrates its tree canopy. The Environmental Commission supports the Shade Tree Advisory Committee as it works to maintain the existing canopy, plant new trees, and educate residents about all the benefits of our trees. As such, the Environmental Commission supports the ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 29 Protection of Trees. The Environmental Commission supports the revision to require permits for the removal of smaller diameter trees in the revised ordinance and the additional clarity around replacement trees. Both changes acknowledge the importance of the existing trees in Summit and help mitigate the negative effects of tree removals. In addition, the revised ordinance promotes native species. The use of native species is key in supporting the full range of insects, pollinators, birds, and other wildlife. The use of native trees better accommodates rainfall and reduces flooding. Native trees are also better acclimated to handle drought conditions. New Jersey is experiencing both extremes of increased downpours with flash flooding and drought conditions. And the revised tree ordinance improves Summit's resilience. Based on these considerations, the Environmental Commission supports Ordinance 10977 and the additional protections to the city's trees. Sincerely, Donna Goggins-Petel on behalf of the Summit Environmental Commission.
Thank you. I have it already, yes.
Evening. Hi, my name's Scott Jorek, Sixth Hickory Road, and I've been living in Summit for the past ten years. I volunteer for the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, and I'm here in favor of this updated Protection of Trees ordinance. So I have three quick points. One, why now? It was over a year ago that the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection revised the Tier A Municipal Stormwater General Permit, which in turn required municipalities to adapt the updated tree removal replacement standards. So in addition to wanting to revise and update our city's tree permitting process, we were required to do so as per the NJDEP. Second point is, why do we care? I care because I love trees. I'm a tree guy. I've read the thirty-five pages of this ordinance a few times, and I probably still need to read it again. Protecting our city's trees is a good thing. The rules and regulations are in place to maintain and preserve all the good things that come with trees, as in aesthetics, privacy, air quality, helps reduce water runoff, help cool down homes and streets. Another point from Money.com article dated July 2022 reads, "Homes with trees have anywhere from 3.5% to 15% more value than those without." And there are so many other more reasons why trees benefit our community. So third point is, what do we do? So I encourage my fellow Summit residents, both current and more importantly, new residents, to become tree people, if not already. Use the resources around you to help you maintain and care for your trees for the benefit of current and future residents. So some of those resources people could and should reach out to are the many local reputable arborist companies. They could reach out to the city forester and the Shade Tree Advisory Commission. And also, they could visit the Reeves Reed Arboretum right here in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Francie Cho, twenty-seven, Beekman Terrace. I'm very much in favor of this updated Protection of Trees ordinance. The language regarding protection and maintenance of the tree canopy is thoughtful and will provide the tools to help maintain the Summit tree canopy in concrete ways. I'm one of the people who reviews zoning applications on behalf of the Environmental Commission. And as such, I appreciate the clear language giving the city forester the means to deny permits for tree removal based on certain criteria. Furthermore, I've seen many instances of significant trees being cut down unnecessarily and slated for replacement with trees that are not comparable. It was very frustrating to see zoning applications with twenty-inch and thirty-inch oak trees marked for removal with plans to replace them with an ornamental tree that would never contribute to the tree canopy or carbon sequestration in any way approaching that of the shade trees being removed. The new language providing for in-kind replacement of significant trees, that is, shade trees must be replaced with shade trees, is excellent. As we all know, trees are critical to the fight against global warming, and I'm very pleased to see this thoughtful language being proposed for protecting the trees of Summit. Thank you so much to the Shade Tree Commission. I'm very grateful to you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I just want to say.
Thank you for those who came up. Scott, Mr. Jorek, I think you're here. Why now? I think it's a great question. I'll have to huddle up with our city administrator and our director to see why we didn't meet that original timeline. I wasn't aware that we were late on that, but I think it's a great question. I really liked your questions. And to Francine Cho, I think the really fun part of this is when you sit on the planning board or the zoning board and you take a look at all of these applications. Because it is very hard to tell, you know, what trees, you know, need to be replaced. And that's why we have professionals that look at all of this stuff. It is nice to see visuals. I would say even in those applications that we're looking at from planning or zoning, it's really interesting to see, you know, the trees from ten years ago versus now. And that's one of the things that we're working on in the planning board, is to be more educated on this. So as part of the planning board, I'll make sure to pass this along and to the zoning board and the planning board. I think it'll be really great.
Excellent. Thank you. I just wanted to say, I fully support this ordinance. Someone once said to me that trees will yield when it comes to development. And I will always stand up for more green space and trees against overdevelopment. We've seen significant stormwater issues and flooding that relates to development. And so I think that we need to do more of these types of ordinances. So I will be fully supporting it tonight. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Madam Clerk? Oh, we're gonna close the hearing. Oh, sorry. Councilman Smallwood?
Oh, I thought you were council comments.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, absolutely. So I completely concur with Mr. Kilby. During graduation, waiting for the high school procession, is that right?
Oh, yeah. For the graduation?
Yes. Waiting for the graduates to take their seats. I was certainly seeking shade. And I'm so glad that we have a huge tree right there by the field in Tatlock. So although I'm not on the Shade Tree Committee, I am the liaison for the Environmental Commission as well as the Recycling Committee. And I will one hundred percent wholeheartedly be in support of this new ordinance.
Excellent. Any other council members? No? Okay.
Nope.
Okay. Y'all look like you're going to say something, but I'm not quite sure.
Needing them to vote.
Okay, you want to vote? Okay, I gotcha. All right, then we're gonna call, we're gonna close this hearing. Madam Clerk, please read the first ordinance for final consideration.
Ordinance number 24-3320, an ordinance amending the code Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4 Departments Created, Section 2-15, Department of Police, Subsection 2-15.1 Establishment.
Excellent. Councilman Boyer?
Yes, one, I'm sorry, I lost my page here. What was the number of the?
Twenty-four, three-three-two-zero. Twenty-four dash three-three-two-zero.
See, now we had a duplicate here.
An ordinance.
Yes, okay. Having closed the hearing a moment ago, I would like to move this ordinance for final adoption.
Second.
Excellent. Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Bartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance number 24-3321, repeal and replace Chapter 29 Protection of Trees.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you, Councilwoman. This, having just heard the hearing on twenty-four dash three-three-two-one, I would like to move this ordinance for a vote.
Second.
Excellent. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Bartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion carries. Okay, ordinances for. Ordinances for introduction. Madam Clerk, please read the first ordinance.
ID number 11346, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 General Licensing, Section 4-19 Public Places Where Food and Beverages Are Sold or Served of the Code of the City of Summit.
Councilman Palowski?
Yeah, this is ordinance ID number 11346. The ordinance will be revised to provide that in the event of a change of name or a change in ownership of a food establishment, a new application must be filed and a new license issued prior to selling food under the new ownership or the new name. Purpose of the ordinance is so that the city will know the identity of an owner where there's a switch in ownership during the year. Normally, you would renew at the end of the. Yeah, annually, so.
Second.
Excellent. Okay. Council comments? No? All right. Public comments?
Nope.
Nope, nope, because we're introducing. My apologies. I got lost. Sorry. All right, roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Bartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye.
Okay, the hearing will be on Tuesday, July ninth. Madam Clerk?
ID number 11347, an ordinance amending the code Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-25 Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Property, Subsection 7-25.4 Regulations.
Councilman Smallwood?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 11347, an ordinance amending the code Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-25 Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Property, Subsection 7-25 dot four Regulations. This is in the manner of parking lots and garages. And just to, without the legalese, this means that you can actually, if you have a front plate, you can park straight in, or you can back in. So after much discussion with this original, was, this original ordinance was introduced about a month and a half ago. And there was some discussion among council that they liked to back in their cars, as well as other residents. So what we did is, we took it back, we revised it. And what we're introducing tonight is that you would be able to, if you have a front plate, you may back into your parking spot so it's not head-in parking only. The reason for that is because our traffic, our parking authority officers use cameras to scan your license plate. So that helps them determine how long you've been in the parking spaces, whether it's the garages or the parking lots, as well as the street parking. So with that, I move to introduce this ordinance.
Second.
Excellent. All right, council comments? Okay. Roll call, vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Bartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye.
The hearing will be on Tuesday, July ninth. Motion carries. Okay, on to resolutions. Councilman?
Hamlet.
Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you. This is Resolution 11351. This resolution, actually, Rosie, we have a Scrivener's error in this.
Yeah, there's a typo.
This is just a typo.
Should say.
Right.
We're fixing it.
Okay. Sorry.
You can bundle these.
Can I bundle them?
You can bundle.
That'd be great. Okay. So these are resolutions 11351 and 11349, which authorize the 2024 salaries effective January 1st, 2024, for the COLA and effective July 1st, 2024, for the step increases. I would move these resolutions.
I second. I'll second. All right, council comments? Public comments? Okay, we'll vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, safety and health, Councilman Boyer.
Yes, this is Resolution. 11.
You can.
One and two.
One and two.
Do you want me to bundle them? Okay, one and two. This is Resolution 11336 and Resolution 11337. As per.
11271. 11271.
Wait, when we start at the top? Okay, I'm sorry.
We're one and two.
This is Resolution ID 11271 and Resolution ID 11.
336.
336. Got it. I'm sorry. As per closed session discussions, I move to adopt this ordinance.
Second.
Excellent. Okay. Council comments? Public comments? Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Councilman Boyer, your third resolution.
Yes, now I'm getting this right. This is Resolution ID number 11337, confirming the mayor's appointment to police sergeant. Unless the mayor would like to comment. Based on closed session discussions, I'd like to move this resolution for adoption.
Second.
As we all know, we have an exceptional police force, and this is a promotion within the department. And in working with Chief Zagorsky and the Safety Committee, we had some terrific interviews and really, really pleased to support Officer Burnettto to be promoted to sergeant.
Great. Great. Congratulations. Any council comments? Public comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on to capital projects and community services. Um, Councilwoman Hamlet, your first one, first resolution.
Uh, thank you. This is ID one-one-three-oh-five, which will amend the professional services agreement, twenty-twenty-four, planning and zoning supplemental services for Neglia with additional fees of twenty-five thousand dollars. I'd like to move this ordinance for introduction, this resolution for introduction.
Second.
Sorry, I forgot to get a second.
Talking.
I didn't know if that was you or Andy. Sorry.
Everybody race. Okay. Council comments?
I mean, what I was gonna say, without boring everybody in the resolution, um, and I've spent probably way too much time on this specific, um, this specific one. Uh, so Neglia is actually an additional professional services company that is, is adding to our zoning department. While, most of you know, we just lost Krista Anderson, who is our zoning officer, so right now, our zoning activities are not only handled by Kris Nicola, uh, but they are hired by Burgess and, uh, so, they are also supplemented by Burgess and Associates and by Neglia. So, this really is a crucial, uh, vote tonight, getting these additional funds. I will say, in looking at the invoices for the last several years, I do think we need to, and I've asked the city administrator, to put more detail in these invoices, and the reason is, as we reevaluate how community services develops, and what we need in the organization to move it forward, we need to have a better understanding of who does what. You know, what is Burgess and Associates doing versus Neglia, and what are the future needs of the city? So, these are all the things that I thought about. It might seem like a, a, a small task to just approve twenty-five thousand dollars, but when we look at what the City of Summit needs going forward, it's a very thoughtful process in which we need to, to start, which is right now.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? Public comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilwoman Hamlet, your second resolution.
Sure. Uh, yes, this is ID one-one-two-three-oh, which awards the, is this the right one? Yep, sorry. Uh, which awards the City of Summit Cooperative Pricing for the twenty-twenty-four Micro Surface Program not to exceed two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Uh, I would like to move this resolution for introduction.
Second.
Great. Council comments?
I, I will say one thing, that I'm in favor of, of doing this. However, we do have a list from PSCNG, uh, of work that they would like to do in the City of Summit, so I do need to huddle up with Director Schreger to get that list, and just make sure that this list is accurate versus, uh, if there are roads that are gonna be ripped up by PSCNG, we certainly don't wanna be micropaving them. I'm not sure, because I haven't seen that list yet, but, um, wanted to just mention, mention that.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other council comments?
Can I just add? The, the hope would be, it's gonna be a lot more streets from PSCNG, right? So, the hope would be that we can get our rep to come and speak to us in committee, and then hopefully here, uh, to explain to the community what they are doing, uh, over the course of the next many months. Thank you.
Perfect.
And just to piggyback on council, Councilman Barton, and I think you said this before, um, we wanna make sure that there is some, uh, distance between paving and ripping up, paving and ripping up. Um, I know, uh, there have been residents who have emailed and called and said, "Didn't we just pave this street? Now we're ripping it back up again." I mean, we want some longevity in our, in our streets, so.
Excellent. We do have a five-year moratorium, but somehow the utilities end up being exempt somehow. Um, all right, public comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilwoman Hamlet, number three.
Yes, this is resolution one-one-three-six-one, which is rejecting the bids and authorizing a new advertisement for the paddle tennis court improvement project. Uh, there was only one bid received for the paddle tennis court improvement project by the purchasing agent on Tuesday, June fourth, uh, and it was rejected for the incomplete bid bond. Uh, so we will be going back out to work, uh, but going back out to bid for these paddle tennis courts. Rosie, I appreciate you putting this on the agenda. Uh, I know, it was, we had to push it a little quicker. Uh, but I'd like to move this resolution for introduction.
Second.
Excellent. All right, council comments?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. Um, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Hamlet, do you know when we'll go back out to bid? I mean, this project has been going on for a very long time. Um, it, it just seems like it keeps getting delayed and delayed.
Right.
I mean, I, I gotta think that there are more than one, one, more than one company that's out there doing that.
This is actually, this was an interesting one. It took us a long time to actually figure out who could draw the engineering specs up for this, so we had to look at organizations like Stone Har, sorry, towns like Stone Harbor and Seagurt. So, it took us a long time to actually get the engineering specs written for the paddle tennis court in order to go out for this RFP. Um, the one, there, there's, there's actually only a few companies that do this, um, so we are pretty limited. Well, I know we plan on going out to bid. I don't know if, Augusto, if you know when we're going out, but I know it's probably this month.
July sixteenth is the opening.
Oh, it's July sixteenth, got it.
Yeah, we're advertising on the third.
Okay, and I am coordinating with, um, uh, with Natasha around what we need to do. There was, there was a mistake in this one, but since there's only so many, um, companies that do this, I just wanna make sure that everybody knows that the actual bid is happening. I don't know if you can talk about that, um, Tammy, but...
Sorry, through you, Council President. She will advertise it appropriately to get the most, you know, to get it out there to the most people she can. If anybody knows anybody that's interested when it goes up, um, on the third, when it's advertised, the more bids we get, the better it is, so.
Excellent. Okay, any other council comments? All right, public comment? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Councilwoman Hamlet, number four.
Keeping me busy tonight. Okay, this is resolution one-one-three-seven-zero, which will authorize the purchase of a garbage truck for two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-sixty-nine, one-hundred-and-forty-one dollars and twenty cents. And this was approved in the twenty-twenty-four capital budget process, approved the funding for the replacement purchase of a single-axle, uh, reloader trash truck by the Division of Public Works in support of its sanitation unit trash collection operations. This recommendation is to purchase a new twenty-twenty-five Kenworth T480 four-by-two chassis. I would like to move this resolution for introduction.
Aye, second.
Okay, council comments? Public comment? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilwoman Hamlet, your last resolution.
Yes, thank you. This is resolution one-one-three-four-five. This is, pending, this was pending closed session discussion, to appoint Dan Palusak to the Hometown Heroes Ad-Hoc Committee. And I'd like to move this resolution for introduction.
Second.
Excellent. Council comments? Public comments?
I would just like to say real quick, um, Dan was one of our residents who raised his hand and reinvigorated the map system for our Hometown Heroes. So, now, when the Hometown Hero banners are being put up by DPW, they're automatically geo-mapped to our app and loaded into the City of Summit's website. So, I'd like to thank Michael Arlene for chasing down all of the residents who are asking where the banners are every year. Uh, it was really his idea to enhance this, um, enhance this process, and we're really excited. Uh, residents are looking, uh, for their family members, and it's, it's really heartwarming when they finally find their banner. So, I just wanna thank the resident for all his hard work.
Great.
Dilly is on the forest this year.
With my short hair, like, that was like, in, yeah, you were like nineteen, yes.
Excellent. All right, public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, at this time, we're gonna vote on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving along. Almost to nine-thirty, guys. We might do it. Oh, wait, we're losing some interns. I'm trying to hurry.
I'm not supposed to call them out.
Bye, you guys. Have a great night. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Watch your step, watch your step. Yeah, well done, you guys. Thank you. Bye. All right. Okay. Uh, council comments? Do I have any?
Can I say something, actually? Now that they're not here, I wanna talk about them. No, the interns. The, I wanna talk about the program, generally. Uh, we, we pay, City of Summit pays interns now. Uh, this is a couple years, two, three years, that we've been paying them now. Um, you know, what that, what it does, when you have unpaid internships, is makes them available only to people that don't have to be paid, right? So, it's giving further opportunity to people that are already pretty privileged, right? So, like, for somebody like me, growing up in Summit, who had to work over the summer, I was a lifeguard at the pool, you know, I would've loved to work at City Hall instead, uh, but, but, uh, you know, I think this is a tremendous opportunity, uh, and obviously, the city wins too, because we get, uh, the experience of these folks who get to do some pretty cool projects. And I've worked closely with them on a few of those. So, cool. Thank you. That's it for me.
And some of them actually have two jobs, here and elsewhere.
Yes.
And, and sadly, this is their last week, so.
Yeah.
But they've done great work so far.
All right. Anyone else? Council comments?
Uh, you know, uh, Council President, uh, you know, we've been getting a lot of calls, uh, this week, um, about, uh, motor vehicle thefts, attempted motor vehicle thefts, burglaries. Um, and I, I did receive a report from, uh, Chief Zagorski. Thank you, Chief Zagorski. Um, there was a resident that had asked, you know, "What are we doing? What plans do we have?" And, you know, I don't wanna talk about, um, uh, how we do policing, but I was wondering if the chief would wanna, wanna come up and say anything about, um, just crime in our town. Uh, you wanna make any statements or anything to you? If, if there, if there's anything that you wanna say about, um, uh, increased police presence, or whatever, whatever we are doing to combat, um, the recent... I don't know how to answer that one, though. I could give a chance, I don't know how to answer that one.
Yeah, we had, um, uh, the other night, we had two attempts, and then one the night before that. This month, uh, we've had a total of six attempts to enter motor vehicles, and three stolen motor vehicles. In all, um, the, the attempts to enter motor vehicles and the, the thefts of motor vehicles and burglaries to residential dwellings are down. However, you know, we are not at zero. We still do get, um, activity, and it's important for residents to remain vigilant, uh, contact us when they see something suspicious, and remember to, um, you know, take a common sense, uh, crime, uh, uh, measures such as locking your, uh, car doors and taking your key fobs, locking your, um, your home when you're, even when you're in the residence, setting your alarm, uh, even when you're in the residence that night.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
I know people wanna hear from you, not from me. This is the Boyer guy. Um, so just quick on the stats, uh, from January, uh, through May, so I'll start with twenty-twenty-two, burglaries four. In twenty-twenty-three, we had twelve, and this is to date, January to May, sorry, January to May. And twenty-twenty-four, burglaries seven. So, these are the numbers for burglaries and attempted burglaries to motor vehicles. Uh, twenty-twenty-two, from January to May, we had fifty-four. Twenty-twenty-three, January to May, thirty. And twenty-twenty-four, January to May, thirteen. Calls for service this year are up. Uh, in twenty-twenty-four, about twenty-one thousand calls for service. Twenty-twenty-three, uh, I wonder, approximately, twenty thousand calls. And in twenty-twenty-two, approximately nineteen thousand. Um, in terms of traffic enforcement, moving violations, the total summonses in twenty-twenty-two was eighteen hundred, and twenty-twenty-three, roughly fifteen hundred, and twenty-twenty-four, two thousand. Uh, in terms of parking summonses in twenty-twenty-four, one thousand three-hundred-and-thirty-five. So, there's a lot more parking summonses. Uh, I don't know if I should, uh, should credit Councilman Smallwood or Allen, um, but, uh, there's a significant increase there. Um, in terms of moving violations, uh, moving summonses, uh, in twenty-twenty-four, two-hundred, excuse me, six-hundred-and-seventy-two, twenty-twenty-three, five-hundred-and-sixty-two, and twenty-twenty-two, five-hundred-and-sixty. Uh, so we've seen an increase in, uh, moving by summonses for moving, uh, summonses. Uh, I just want to also say to, uh, Chief Zagorski, that I know your officers are working, um, hard. I've seen personally a increased police presence, uh, in town, um, and I know soon, uh, we'll have some new officers starting at, you know, at some point, uh, hopefully, uh, this summer. And the initiative of having those officers roaming and, uh, going after certain criminal activity and not actually taking calls, I think it was a great idea and would be very helpful, uh, in reducing crime. Um, I have no more comments.
I have one.
Can we just have those stats on the website?
Yeah.
Can we add those to the website later? Because I was, I was gonna try to write them down, but I, I knew I wasn't gonna keep up.
And, and Councilman Barton, I sent you an email, because I just got them too.
Thank you.
So, I know you've been asking for them.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Chief, last night, the, the vehicle in question, did we know if that went through the license plate reader, or not?
Yes, it did. Um, we tracked it when it came into town. It came into town, it happened ten minutes before the incident itself. However, um, it wasn't entered stolen yet in the system, so we didn't get an alert. Had it been entered stolen in the system, we would get an immediate alert saying that it was in town. Um, we realized that it was in town after we got, um, a partial plate from a witness, and then, um, dispatch ran a couple different scenarios of, of the plate in the model, and then it came back to a stolen car, and we were able to confirm, once we had that information, we were able to confirm that the information was captured by our cameras coming into town. But, um, again, it wasn't, um, uh, it wasn't in the system as stolen yet.
So, but it got in the system as stolen within those ten minutes?
No, it was in NCIC stolen. Uh, it takes a little bit longer to get into the, um, the, uh, the, the camera reader system.
And what was that again, the NC?
NCI, I mean, NCIC, I'm sorry. NCI, as to the show.
Okay, got it. Thank you for, thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
Great.
And Chief, just as a follow-up, though, um, and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have to be like, very, very on point when we are identifying stolen vehicles, because they typically necessitate a felony stop. So, you wanna get that right. Am I, am I correct on that one?
Well, we wanna get it right for a lot of reasons, uh, because sometimes you do get, uh, a, a false hit. So, when you get, when you get the hit, um, we have to confirm through NCIC. Um, that's, that's, that's the, um, one that we go by, um, because, uh, we, we do have a problem with, uh, the, the dealer plates. Um, each dealer plate, the, the, each dealership is assigned certain numbers, and then they have little numbers at the end. So, if one of those plates gets reported stolen, uh, well, the whole series, it'll hit by the cameras saying it's stolen, even the ones that aren't stolen, obviously. So, our cameras, that are by the car dealerships, we had to make adjustments, because we were getting hit after hit after hit, because they report one plate stolen, and then the whole series is hitting. So, like, again, you have to do, um, you just can't go by what the, uh, the camera reader says. You have to verify it through NCIC.
Thank you for your explanation, Chief. Appreciate it.
Excellent.
I just wanna say, um, highlight the fact that you got a partial plate from a resident, from a, an astute resident.
Yes.
That was, helped you and your detectives, detective, to get...
That's correct.
A full plate. So, that was excellent work.
Thank you. And I'm very excited to see the pedestrian signs downtown in the crosswalks. So, yeah, I, thank you for that.
And, by the way, my daughter was crossing the street, uh, on Morris Avenue, by the hospital, and there's a, there's a flag. You take the flag out, and you walk across the street with the flag.
Did the hospital.
That's, that's the hospitals.
Well, they stole them from New Providence, because we didn't put them out.
Yeah, they stole them from New Providence.
I, I, I just, I just thought that was...
Not your daughter, I meant whoever put it there.
I just thought that was an amazing idea, right? So, you take the flag out when you're crossing the street.
Have you never been next door to New Providence? Have you not seen these?
No, I don't go to New Providence. I'm sorry. No, I'm just kidding.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Chief. Any other council comments?
I just have one. Um, Mayor, I don't wanna put you on the spot here, but can you, can you provide an update on Bryant Pond?
I, indeed, I can. In fact, I happen to have right here, um, the current status. General contractor, for, this is for Bryant Pond. Um, the general contractor has completed the first section of the Bryant Pond hydroraking, and has placed approximately fifteen hundred square yards of material that was removed from the bottom of Bryant Pond in the designated material staging area, which is eight, basically a pit. Um, and they will start to remove the existing stockpile of material from Bryant Pond location on or about today, June twenty-fourth. Um, they basically have to wait for all the water to seep out, and they need to, um, get it tested. There's a whole process. So, um, upon completion of this first round, uh, the contractor will continue with the hydroraking process, and will place the material removed from the bottom of the next section of Bryant Pond in this, in the fenced area. And this process will continue until the hydroraking work has been completed. The construction work is expected to be completed with all of the material removed by the middle of August this year, weather permitted. That was from the county as of, as of today.
Looked better.
Looked better.
So, good news from the county.
Excellent news.[1780.31]
Through you, Council President. I'm sorry, I'm all over the place tonight. I, I had asked the fire chief just to talk about the, the firehouse tonight, and I didn't want to, to leave the meeting, and he did all his good work. It's, it's all right, you're good? Why don't you give an update? Is that?
Okay, keep, yeah.
I'll make it quick. Yes, real quick. A quick update on the firehouse. Timeframes, we awarded the project in 2021. Letter to proceed was in January 2022. It was a 60-month build time, which took us to April of 2023. We're obviously over our timeframe. Anticipating completion date is July, beginning of August of '24. That's where we stand now. Other than that, building is almost completed. Interiors, it's about finished up, got some site work left to do on it. So we're almost there. So it will hopefully be done in July, beginning of August. And our goal is to have some kind of opening in sometime in September. So I had to get closer to that date. We're confident we'll put a date out to everybody, so.
Excellent.
All right. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks for your very concise report.
All right. Okay, any other comments? Because I'd like to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to motion to adjourn.
No.
Second.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.